And if we can do better than that, come on in and say some prayers all over the house. We're grateful for seeing you and everyone of you to join us for this important meeting, City of South Bend Town Hall Gathering. This is an opportunity for us as a community to come together to address the pains and grief that we're experiencing from Sunday's episode. And so, as we come together, we want you to have open hearts, open minds, and as well, we want you to be engaged and empowered. And so, we're looking forward to your participation, and we're looking forward as well to speaking to our Mayor, Mayor Pete Buttigieg, and our Chief of Police, Scott Waskowski. And so, we welcome each and every one of you again. Let us kick this off with prayer. Most merciful Father, we are grateful and thankful unto you. You are the King of glory, and we enter into this place, your space, now invoking your presence here. We need you, we are pained, we are grieving, we have challenges in our community, and we are open and honest with you because we believe that you can address the pain, address the challenges that we are experiencing. The Bible says that David said, "When my heart is overwhelmed inside of me, I go to the rock." Tonight, God, we go to the rock. And we ask the rock to give us answers, give us solutions as a community, that we may address, God, the challenges that we have been experiencing over the course of time with success and victory. We give you the praise, glory, and honor as we now submit ourselves one to another and unto you, and have questions answered, that we may be blessed by them. In Jesus' name I pray, amen, and praise the Lord. Come on, one more time, clap your hands. Again, we've joined ourselves together, and we're all aware of the incident or incidents that have occurred over the course of a week's time. Long before these incidents, we've had other incidents that have challenged us, that have created things in our community that we need to address. I'm Apostle Michael Patton, I am the President of your local South Bend, N W A C P. Our Board of Directors are delighted to be here on today, to be a part of this city Town Hall Gathering. And we want to be engaged, and we are involved in every speck of the meaning of that, that we are, have our hands in the process of what's taking place, and we're looking forward to creating solutions and being a part of bringing healing to our community as well. We also have with us Mayor Pete Buttigieg, would you give him a round of applause for him joining us? As well, we have our Chief of Police, Chief Scott Waskowski, would you give him a round of applause? I saw also many of the council members, they are present, if you will stand wherever you are, we would appreciate that, they are front and center, thank you as well. There are many other community leaders, let me recognize the pastors in the community, the faith community, if you would stand, if you are a pastor in this community, please stand with me. We solicit your prayers, pastors, and as well, all of the people of God, as we're walking through the process of this gathering as well, we certainly solicit the prayers of those that are present. We're now going to ask Mayor Pete Buttigieg to come and as well, give us an overview.
Thank you, and thank you to Apostle Patton for hosting and moderating, thank you to Washington High School for having us, thank you to everybody for caring enough to be part of this. We are here for several reasons. We're here first and foremost because the city is hurting, because the city is in pain, because someone among our number died at the hands of another person in this city. We're here to share information, we're here to respond to questions, and we're here to make progress. Not because we think we can solve everything here, or solve everything at all, but because we know we want to step closer if people have the right information and if people are heard. A couple of things I should admit that I cannot speak to today. First of all, I cannot talk to whether any of the actions on Sunday by Mr. Logan or by any of the officers involved are legal or illegal, because that is being investigated separately. Similarly, I cannot speak to whether any actions by any officers at that time were in accordance with policy or against policy, because that is going to be reviewed in a separate investigation. Those investigations have to be impartial, and just, and transparent. I will do nothing to prejudice them. I will say that we will deal with the findings when they come. I know how much concern there is in this city over the police-involved shooting that happened last Sunday. There's also a lot of concern around this city over the loss of lives that took place early this morning in our city. Ten people were shot, at least one life has been lost. Every time a civilian dies at the hands of an officer, every time a civilian dies at the hands of another civilian, and any time an officer comes to harm at the hands of a civilian, they are all disasters. It's a disaster for the family every single time. We were actually on track as a city to have less shootings than last year, and last year had less shootings than the year before. I don't know if that's true anymore, certainly not true as of this moment. We can't bring that number down without all of us doing something about that, and I know this is part of that. We're bringing together people who care about safety and justice, and believe that we can and must have both. I want to share very briefly the process that is going on, there will be more to discuss as the questions come in, that there is one process for reviewing whether any laws were broken on Sunday, that is in the hands of the Metro Homicide Unit. That another process will take place, that is, for whether any discipline of any officer is called for, that will be in the hands of the department, and will then go to the Board of Safety. I've heard the community express two things about the process that I just want to make clear right away where our administration is. The first is a desire for an outside look at what has taken place here by the U.S. Department of Justice. I recognize that request, I respect it, I will send a letter to the Department of Justice, Civil Rights Division, expressing that the city agrees. I cannot promise that they will act on it. Secondly, the community has expressed concern about the review underway by Metro Homicide, because even though it is separate from the South Bend Police Department, it of course involves local law enforcement. Some in the community have asked for an independent investigator to be appointed by the prosecutor to take over. And I want to let you know that I agree with this recommendation as well, and that I notified the prosecutor. It is his decision, but I have let him know that I would like for that to happen, and shared some of the reasons why. We're not only here because of what happened Sunday, even though that is obviously what has brought us to this point. There is a lot beneath the surface when it comes to trust and legitimacy around policing and race in our city. There's a lot of things we've done, and I just want to make sure I've named them, the institution of bias training, civil rights training, community policing efforts that have been going on for years, transparency online, and if you're not familiar with it, I would urge you to consult the South Bend Police Transparency Hub online, it's a website with information, policies, data. And if anyone has any suggestions about additional data sets to add, those will be taken seriously. We've acted to have a more professional promotions process, and to raise discipline standards, which as you may know have included officers who moved from the force for misconduct. We've also taken efforts for diversity recruiting to make sure that the department resembles the community it serves and is more diverse, and have implemented body cameras. As the Mayor of the city, I want to acknowledge that those last two lines of effort, the effort to recruit more minority officers to the police department, and the effort to introduce body cameras, have not succeeded, and I accept responsibility for that. We have tried, but not succeeded, to increase diversity in the police department, and we need help. And while body cameras were implemented across the department, obviously, there is enormous frustration, which I share, that they were not there when we needed them most, and there will be action on that too. So, I'll keep this brief so we can get to the questions. I just want you to know that we're not running from this, we're going to have a conversation that I hope will be respectful. I hope that everyone who speaks may speak without interruption, and I hope that, I know that people aren't going to walk out of this room satisfied, I understand that. We are here to have tough conversations, but I want everyone here at least to be empowered, and I want to make sure voices are heard, that's why we're here. And so, I'm gonna stop talking and go over there, our moderator will ask some questions, and then we will move to audience questions after that. And again, I thank you for being here, and I thank everyone who is here to respectfully participate in this conversation.
Thank you, Mayor Pete, for giving us the overview. I want to ask that we would be respectful to this process. We have a lot of information and content to share, and so, as we respect you from this area, please respect us as well. We're going to do our very best to get your questions answered and share information with you that I believe will be empowering on today. And so, let's walk in love, one towards another. Can you look at your neighbor and say, "Let's walk in love, one to another"? Thank you so much, I appreciate the respect that he's giving me and your time. The Bible says, "Love never fails, and love will cover a multitude of sin." And so, let's walk in love, one to another, so that we can have a healthy engagement. This is a time that we can communicate one to another, we're all hurting, including myself. You feel me? We're all hurting, including myself. I've got questions myself that need to be answered, and I'm here to help facilitate those questions that we have pre-made, and then those questions that will come from the audience, and so, we're looking forward to your participation as well. As the N W A C President, I think it's important for you all to know that we're an advocacy organization, and we are at the table because we believe in fair and equitable processes, and we're believing that justice will come out of this, as you give us time through the process. I'm emphasizing that for a reason, because nothing's going to happen in the next thirty-six hours, but there's a process to this, and we want to give it time to unfold so that we can address the challenges that are before us. All right, with that being said, let's get started with the questions to our Mayor and to our Chief of Police. First question is, what happens after an officer involved, what happens after an officer-involved shooting? Chief Scott?
Well, that's kind of a big question, but from the scene itself, Metro Homicide is immediately called. They come to the scene, and we relinquish the scene, those officers that are on scene, whoever the commanders or supervisors are, relinquish that scene to Metro Homicide. Metro Homicide does what they do with any other investigation, which is to transport witnesses down, and whoever may be involved, and take statements at the Metro Homicide Unit. Immediately, our South Bend officers, unless they're involved in it and an actual incident, will not be part of the investigation. Metro Homicide, it's Mishawaka and St. Joe County, officers would be involved in that investigation and not South Bend. The process with it, from the investigative perspective, is self-explanatory, where they would go and give statements, and they would ask questions, et cetera, but the evidentiary portion would be on those crime scene technicians that would go out there and process the scene, whatever that scene may be. And from that point on, it's an actual scene that we would do, not the South Bend Police Department, but they would do, but we would process similar, any crime scene that we would have, so it is treated as a crime scene from that perspective. Once that is done, all the statements, all the evidence, all the facts are obtained, that is presented to the prosecutor. The prosecutor then makes a decision on whatever that result may be. We do not have consultation with the prosecutor, and whatever his decision is, is what his decision is. That information, facts, evidence, statements, et cetera, is handed over to us afterward. We internally compare all those facts, evidence, statements, et cetera, to our internal policies, but we still ask other questions on top of that. There's a difference, there's Miranda when the officers are down talking to Metro Homicide, that's involved, which means the right to remain silent and all those things. On the police department side, that is not the case. You are compelled to give testimony regarding policies and procedures about our policies and procedures. If you refuse to do so, then you can be terminated. I'm sorry, from that point then, a recommendation is made based on those policies and procedures, and it is written out, and we present that, I do make a recommendation to the board based on any violations of any or all of those policies and procedures that may come into play. That goes to the Board of Safety, and the Board of Safety would make the ultimate decision based on my recommendation. They can agree with my recommendation, or they can exceed my recommendation, but it's based on a period of time of that recommendation. For example, a letter of reprimand, all the way to termination, every time goes to the Board of Safety, so they review that. However, a letter of reprimand up to five days does not require a hearing. The board is still notified, and the board still obviously looks on that, and they put signatures on that. The officer can still ask for a hearing, even within that letter of reprimand to five days, and the board could, if they wanted to, have a hearing, but that's the board's decision, I do not have an influence, it's only a recommendation from my part, meaning the South Bend Police Department, to the board. Anything six days and over, whether or not the officer asks, the board gets to decide whether they have a hearing on it or not, or rely on my recommendation.
And I think these materials have been circulated, does everybody have some paper that's gone around? So, okay, we'll try to circulate more copies if we run out. One of them is a flow chart explaining what Chief just described, I know it's a little confusing. The second is the state law, just want to make sure this is well-understood. The procedure for an officer being disciplined or terminated is set in the state law, and it sets that the Board of Safety has that authority. You can sort of think of it like a trial, so in the same way that if you or I were accused of a crime, there would then be a process in court. If an officer is accused of misconduct, there is a process before the board, which then makes a decision about discipline or termination.
Thank you, gentlemen. Question for you as well, we understand you get it, you're part of the process, but it's still a little hairy to me, and I'm sure to our audience, what does that look like? Are we talking thirty days, we talking twelve months, is this a twenty-four month period? Can you share that with us?
Yes, thank you, Apostle, I'm glad you brought that up. There still is a contractual obligation with the police department via the Board of Safety and via the common council, that the F O P, which is essentially a union within the police department, these are members, that they have a contractual agreement with our city of what things, and these are like days off, working hours, things of that nature, they're working conditions essentially, but within them, there are things, like their bill of rights, and there's things that they have, through contract negotiations, came up with and in agreement with everybody within the city. So, a minimum of an investigation is sixty days. However, we've strived to have it done within, all investigations done within thirty days, but that's based on circumstances, based on evidence, based on severity, based on many things. Now, contractually, we have to have an investigation done no more than sixty days, unless there's extenuating circumstances, then I would have to notify the officer, and City Legal, and everyone else, of the reasons for those extensions, and they have to be legitimate reasons for those extensions.
Please, would you respect the process? I've asked you to respect the process. We're walking in love, one towards another. Have I yelled at you? I would not put you in jeopardy. Let's quieten the anxiety, please, ma'am, let's quieten the anxiety, thank you so much. All right, here we are. Let's talk about where we are in the process of the investigation. And so, Chief Scott, if you'll begin with that process, and then Mayor Pete, if you will then as well add into that. Where are we in the process of this investigation?
Right now, to my understanding, Metro Homicide is still doing whatever they are with facts and evidence, I don't know if it's been presented to the prosecutor for his review yet, I have no knowledge of that, and I certainly don't want to speak on behalf of the prosecutor. I can only speculate, maybe waiting on results, or fingerprint comparisons, or DNA, or things of that nature. Again, that's only my speculation, I don't know in that process, and again, I don't want to speak for the prosecutor.
Let me say this, you have an idea of some things that have happened thus far, the prosecutor came out on Monday and explained some things to us, so we know that we've gotten that first little bit of information, but we also recognize there's more to come, can you address that so that people understand, not so much, I guess, exactly where we are in the process, but there has been some information shared?
Yeah, would it be accurate, Chief, to say that in the past, these things have taken days to a few weeks timeframe?
Yes.
Now, the one thing I would mention is, of course, if it gets referred to an outside prosecutor, that will add to the amount of time, but I think my sense is that that would be worth accepting that.
Okay, thank you for your answers. So, how does the police department know if cameras are being used in accordance to police regulation? As I posed that question, it's obvious, our audience is aware that cameras were not used on Sunday, June 16th. It sounds as though the officer who fired his weapon did not have his camera on, and as well, possibly those who came to support that shooting as well, may not have had their cameras on. Can the two of you address that? When is it that cameras are supposed to be used, and based upon the police regulation?
So, let me start, and I've received a lot of questions and texts and everything from people, one thing I want to clarify, Apostle, is people kept asking me what "should" meant in the policy. And "should" means you will turn the camera on unless you have a compelling reason not to. Okay, so, to that part first. To the second part, the first part of your question is, the second part of your, or the first part of your question is?
Please, please.
We're trying to be informed. Every pursuit, every use of force.
We are, please, let's walk in love, one to another, we're walking the process out. Thank you so much, thank you so much, we're walking the process out. So, Chief, would you continue on?
Every pursuit, every use of force is reviewed, just not from the officers involved, but like a pursuit, for example, if somebody's involved in a pursuit, we don't just look at the vehicles, the squad cars, or the actions of the officers, camera or car, that were involved in the pursuit.
Sure.
But even those responding to the pursuit, and maybe could be on the other side of town or whatever, we should, as well, the same thing with use of force.
If I could add, the text of the policy is on that police website on the Transparency Hub that I mentioned, so if anybody wants to read the words of the policy. So, the policy was developed based on a best practice group called Lexicole. And I also want to mention, the chief at my request put out a general order last week reminding officers of our expectation that the camera is operating during any interaction with a civilian in the course of work. And I want to make clear that, in the view of the administration, that is not a change in policy, that is a statement of our understanding of the policy. As with any policy, if there is a determination that any officer did not follow the policy, then that would be subject to a disciplinary process.
All right, thank you so much for the responses to that question as well. So, what action is taken when this procedure is not followed? In other words, where is the accountability here? Chief?
So, again, it depends on circumstances of officers, and we've had occasions where officers have left the cameras rolling the entire time, even when they're abusing facilities. If there is, if there's an issue and we're made aware of it, should we look into that? Absolutely. So, if it's a first offense, for example, it could be a counseling, performance improvement plan, it could be verbal reprimand, or it could be up to a letter or higher to the Board of Safety, again, based on the severity and the reasons that it was not, is the compelling reason why they were not turned on.
So, we're going to have a question and answer time for the audience, please. We're going to get there, just let us walk through the process, please, I appreciate it. So, when there's nothing, so when something doesn't occur in regards to those cameras being turned on, there's no, there's nothing in place that lets you or the supervisors know that the cameras are being operated on a daily basis, each shift?
There absolutely is. Again, every pursuit, every use of force, any incident is reviewed multiple, look, everything in the area where that activation was or could have been or should have been turned on. As well as that, we do random checks, our Office of Professional Standards, which is a component of our Internal Affairs, also reviews those.
Sure. Mayor Pete, would you like to articulate to that question?
Please, we're going to allow you, we're going to allow you to share.
Mayor Pete?
So, I think one question a lot of people have on their mind is, why isn't the camera just running all the time? There are reasons, they have to do with privacy, showing up on the scene of a sexual assault is one example, but it's also the case that we can and should look at this policy and see if the lines have been drawn in the right way.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much for your responses. Next question, who can fire a police officer?
So, that's the Board of Public Safety. So, under, and I want to make sure this is understood, this is important, under Indiana law, the chief cannot fire a police officer. Under Indiana law, the mayor cannot fire a police officer. Here's how, for any reason, may I? Is it all right if I finish? So, here's how an officer may be removed from misconduct. The police, the chief makes a determination that that ought to happen. The chief brings that before the Board of Safety. The Board of Safety, by the way, consists of five individuals, civilians who are appointed by the mayor. And if you want to know more about the members of the Board of Safety, that's all public information. I appointed them, I am the pointer of...
Let's be respectful of the Mayor's time. Thank you. The Mayor has taken a moment out of his schedule to come and listen, and to, let's be respectful, and to share with you the process of how our city government operates. So, please, please, let's be respectful. So please, please, let's be respectful. Mayor Pete, anyone? Yes. Okay. Sure. Sure. So... So let's... one last question for Mayor Pete and Chief Scott. How will you keep the community informed in regards to this process? How will we do that moving forward?
So it's a very difficult process to do to even conceive because, again, when it comes to law, legalities, contract, it's difficult to give information out. However, and I've heard this, and I'm glad you mentioned this as well, when officers say that they were wrongly dismissed or wrongly whatever left of the police department, for one example, as you saw this Internal Affairs or Administrative Advisory is floating around all over the place.
Sure.
Those cannot be released except for court order or subpoena, or if the officer, any officer, so say for example, an officer left the police department, and they say how they were wrongly done, and I'm just giving an example, have that officer give me permission in writing to release their Internal Affairs file, and you can look at them.
Okay? Mayor Pete? So... So let's allow for our mayor now to answer the question. Thank you so much.
So our intention will be to release as much information as we legally can as quickly as possible. So as you know, there are moments, for example, during the investigation right now where pieces of evidence are still under review, but I can tell you that it will be our policy, that everything that can come out, come out.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's make the transition now to our Q and A part. There will be someone with a mic. Let's see where that's going to be. Who's going to handle the mic for questions? Or are we wanting them to come to the stage? Are we wanting them to come to the stage? There should be a microphone in the audience.
Microphone will come to you. Okay, a microphone will come to you.
Thank you for your patience, and mic is now coming. Let me say as well that we do have the National Action Network has joined us as well. Reverend Al Sharpton and his team is here on tonight, and so we're appreciative to their presence as well. They are coming with the mic, and we are still awaiting the mic so that each individual who wants to ask questions will be able to, as well, articulate themselves. Here we go. Alright, we now have the mic and...
Let me thank everyone for your presence, and I hear the uproar and the pain. I'm getting ready to introduce myself. My name is Pastor Paul T. Lynch. I served with Reverend Al Sharpton, National Action Network, so... Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. All we're coming to do... Hold on a second. Okay. Let's give him a moment. Let's give him a moment. Okay, so hold on. Hold on. Come here. Let me have him a moment. Good. Just stand still, man. Just stand here. Stand here. Real quick, real quick. Real quick. Give him a moment.
Let... Reverend Pete?
Please, quiet.
I tried to set a town hall up three years ago. I tried to set a town hall up. I'm going to let everybody know something. I personally tried to set a town hall up three years ago between the community. The community reached out to the police, being able to bridge this gap between the police and the community. Not a person... you remember that?
Yes, sir.
I personally told you. I had to respect you. You remember that? Three years ago. I said it from the bottom of my head.
Okay. I'll wait until time flies. Third. Third. Go ahead, man. If everyone can just... we're going to allow him to speak if everyone can just calm down. Hold on. Alright.
Three years ago. Three years ago, when everything was going on with Aaron Epper. After the Franklin case got decided, three years ago, I personally decided, I said, "Let's reach out to the community, reach out to the police department, bridge this gap." And I proposed a cookout in a town hall meeting. Went set everything up, made flyers, talked to them, got commitment from everybody that was going to be there, talked to the city, set up the moderator, the panel, everything. Three days before that, they canceled. Hold up, hold up, hold up. Hold up. Three days before that, they canceled. In the meantime, Aaron Epper jumps on somebody out of North Am, a North Am student, but that has no word on that later. Six weeks later, they come over to their own town hall out at the proximity of every day. Now all of a sudden, it's their narrative. They want to do... they want to reach out to the community trying to do this after they turned up. It's not about... it's not about me personally. I'm not mad about me personally getting my ideas stolen. It's the fact that the community reached out. They keep begging for us to reach out and bridge this gap or whatever else, and we reached out to them, and they said no.
Thank you.
Excellent. Would you attend, and then we'll take the next question.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sharon Pete, and I serve as the Director of Community Outreach. I thank you for coming here today. This is my alma mater. This is my home. So if we can allow us to come to you, to put the mic to you, so that way it's a safe and productive conversation, I would greatly appreciate that, if that's okay. Thank you.
Keep it local, man. Keep it local.
Alright, thank you, Sharon.
Thank you. And also, if I may, because I know we have a lot of questions, and we want to make sure we get to those questions and get to a place where people can share their grievances, whatever. If we can do two minutes, if that's possible, to make sure that people can hear and give us some big questions. Thank you so much.
Hey, I'm doing well.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. I want to say something. I know we all... first of all, my name is Daniel Brown. I have marching this time. I have crying this time. We're all upset about it, but I want you to listen. Please, listen. You know, I have lived it. Listen, listen. Let's hold on, Andrew. Ask the question. Okay. Twenty seventeen... Wait, wait. Wait here. I want to talk.
Man, someone else is talking. If you are not activated to talk, if you wait your turn, thank you so much. Thank you. Shout your name as you say it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. We're going to take a moment, and we're going to listen. Alright.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let me do this before we move on. Let's have a word of prayer. Will you bow your heads with me? Bow your heads, please. Father, in the name of Jesus, we ask now God for your peace to be in this place. Settle anxiety, O God, and help us to process the information, to be respectful one to another. We thank you for your presence and for the respect that the people shall give unto you. In Christ's name, amen.
Alright. Thank you, everyone. We're going to go ahead and let Mr. Brown continue with his question, and then we'll go to the next one, where you run over here, if we may.
Okay. Look, the children police, the mayor came out to listen to it, but they didn't come out to hear the screaming and complain. Everybody just calm down. We can listen and talk to them. Twenty seventeen, all we just did was run through G-Rock. But you know what I did? I didn't scream at the mayor, and I didn't scream at Chief Winkowski. I went, I went. They got the citizens police attached. I don't want to be a policeman, but I wanted to know what they go through. That's how we can deal with them. They're dealing with things like we are. There's things that need to be changed. We're going to get it done. Get back to the company tonight. We're going to get it done. We are going to get it done. But give them a chance to listen to our complaints. Don't scream at them. When I went through their eight weeks of training, shopping, community police attached, understood a lot. At Paul Winkowski, when things didn't complete, he was going headway. He came personally. He didn't send nobody. He came personally. Give him a chance. Pete Booty did it. It's a good mayor. Give him a chance. Give him a chance. Give him a chance. We're going to... I'm frustrated by the black lives, black on black. I'm frustrated. You tell me justice. You like telling me justice. But we... but that's what. We're going to get them straight if you give them a chance.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I can hold it myself. I appreciate you. I don't understand how you expect anyone to talk about respect in an oppressed society. What is respect in an oppressed society? How can you blame the victims of last night in an oppressed society? So what you can do today? And I'm not playing, and I got two minutes. What you can do today? There are ways to assess the way people think. Do you understand? Get the people that are racist off the street. Reorganize your department. You can do that by Friday. Please, let me talk now, if I need you to hear me. You can do this by Friday of next week, this week, whatever. You can assess by giving each one of your people in your department five hundred, six hundred, whoever, an inventory. You will get data back. Anybody in denial or polarization gets off the streets. Intercultural Development Inventory. If you don't want me to do it, because I am a qualified administrator, if you don't want me to do it, Dr. Mitch Hammer is the person that created the scientific tool that he has used in police departments. Reorganize your department by Friday of next week and base on data. Get the racists off the streets. It's disrespectful that I wake up every day scared. It's disrespectful that I have three boys, and I have to sit today. What do they do? Get them off the street. Any racism is after their death. Put them after death. Make them do paperwork. Put the people that care about the fact of... Two different things, honey. I love your hair. Make them the ones out there on the street.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, man. Responded after this is done. Let me respond to that. You might stay around just while I'm responding and go back to your seat. Okay. First of all, thank you for that. And I appreciate that what you said is specific and actionable and constructive. I will say that if anyone who is on patrol is shown to be a racist or to do something racist in a way that is substantiated, that is their last day on this trail. I would love to be able to finish... I would love to be able to finish my reply, if that's okay. I would appreciate being able to finish my reply. I believe you have described a specific tool that can be used in order to identify indications of racism. It is not familiar to me, and so I thank you for bringing it up, and I will research it right away. Any tool that can help the city make good on the promise I just made is a tool that we will want to know about. Thank you. You have the mic, yes.
Oh, yes.
Please, everyone...
The truth never get... want to get hurt, but we don't speak it today because the order for justice to get served in a correct, appropriate manner, the truth must go. So since we want to have church for our churchgoers, hold on, because that's going to be the first thing. I'm a son and son. In the book of Proverbs, chapter eight, verse twenty-one. We're going to take it on in. She cries out in the noisy streets and shout at the city gates. And you fools, how long would you be foolish? How long would you make fun of wisdom such as Coleman each Kenyatta Wheeler? I've been in this gang for ten years as an activist, standing in spirit and in truth for the city of South Bend, and I have an army behind me. Believe that. You just never gave me the spotlight. Y'all threw me up under the bus. Now I'm going to ask Mayor Pete, is you going to leave me up under there? Because I went to you at one-on-one night with the mayor at Ivy Town, correct? As well as our chief up there, too. So with that being said, I be that, but you really ain't with that. And yeah, I heard you called me a bitch, but you ain't with it. So anyway, if you only had... if you... if you only... if you only had a listen... Stan's verse twenty-three. If you only had listened when I directed you, "Said God, attend my people," I would have told you from my heart. How I called.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
I called, but you refused to listen, and I held out my hand, and you paid no attention. And this is a book of Proverbs. The Proverbs is a book for the wise women, and I'm going to leave that at that. On November ninth, twenty twelve, my son Ray Terryon Wheeler was taken on murder. That's what the devil of South Bend said. And this is why we call it war on two fronts. This is why the blacks don't like Coleman each Wheeler, because I'm talking to the black supremacists as well as the white supremacists. So therefore, black on black crime is destroyed before Mayor Pete or any officer of the South Bend Police Department get to it, because we are being destroyed by our own black community to get to the people to handle the crimes. That's why the black community do not like Coleman each Kenyatta Wheeler. That's why our lives and my children's lives have been endangered in this city. That's why I went out, even though I was under the lowest of the law. There was a group intervention put in place for black on black crime by these two individuals sitting up here. The call came out. The call came out for single mothers in the black community that was experiencing difficulties with our African-American sons in the streets of South Bend. It's not our fault that some parents failed to... It's not our fault that some parents failed to utilize what was put in place so we can have a conductive way of handling black on black crime, but you didn't wanna listen. Well, I'm glad I did. So if anybody mad, what I gotta say, then I'm not hard to find. I don't fear nobody.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, but the NAACP
Thank you so much, ma'am. I really appreciate your, your question. Thank you so much. Will you give the mic up, please? Will you all clap your hands in this place? Thank you so much. Will you give the mic up? Thank you so much, we appreciate you.
Yeah, I think they cut it off.
They did, she's still holding onto it.
Alright. If I may, if I may, ladies and gentlemen, reintroduce again the rule of, uh, tonight. I know we have a lot of people that want to make remarks and ask questions, but please, the questions, let them be here towards where we're here for tonight. And I know a lot of people have questions about what is at the table right now, okay? So, also, one other thing I would like to say for those who can't hear me in the back, if we can make sure that there's no line for them on the safety because we make sure that everyone feels safe in this environment. Ladies, ladies, ladies.
Ladies, ladies.
Ladies.
And we have an officer set over to this area, please.
I understand the emotions are high right now and we have a lot of questions here, but I wanna make sure that we have a productive conversation. I understand we're all emotional, I get it. And we all have a stake in this. But please let the questions be asked. Thank you, and please stay in your seats, we will get to you. There were also cards that were handed out, I have questions with names as well. And I know there's people who've been waiting to have questions, so if I don't get to you in time, please know that it's not ignoring you. I just wanna make sure that people get a chance to have their questions. And I know that Apostle Patton had some questions based off of the themes that we as a city have been hearing. The concerns and the questions they have about this particular thing. And I wanna make sure that we create a space where everyone can listen to those questions and those answers because we have answers. Not all the answers, but the answers to the process. And I know that has been the questions that have been asked of us. So please give us the space. Please give us the space to share that information with you. I wanna continue with the questions you have and then we'll go back to the Q and A, please.
Thank you so much, Sherri, for bringing us up to date and positioning us as to where we are now. So, um, let's ask a question about resources. Um, well, let's talk about trust. How do we bring trust back to our police force? So, Mayor Pete, if we could address that, uh, because it's wanting to be important as I look at our community. Obviously, our police department is here to serve and protect. Um, but if we can't trust our police department, that's difficult for them to do. And it's difficult for us to have a relationship of any kind, uh, when there's no trust. And so, I believe that trust, um, has been broken in our community and we have to do something about it to regain the trust. And we can't just have this kind of a meeting and we walk away and not commit ourselves to a process that will call, that will bridge this gap. So I believe that question is critical.
So, let me tell you some things that I think might help. But let me also acknowledge that the entire community will have to be empowered here, sure. That we've done up until now. It's also clear that we have a long way to go. I do wanna clarify that Chief Roskowski has my confidence. Let me mention a few things that I think are examples of areas we could work on together. And I would love to hear more, either tonight or in the weeks that are going to come. There are several areas where we know there's a lot of concern in the community, where there's a policy or a practice or both, that the community may not have confidence in. And that we could invite the community to help us reshape it. I'll mention six. One is the use of force. There's a written policy around the use of force. Is it the right one? Could it be improved? We can have a community process to look at that. Number two, briefly cameras. So obviously, there is a lot of concern about what it takes to have confidence that body-worn cameras are doing what we intend them to do. The third is the process for investigating an officer-involved shooting. We've described the process, the way that it works, that it goes to Metro Homicide, that the prosecutors in charge are deciding if charges should be filed before any of it goes to the police for discipline. That is not the only process we could have. If there is another process that community members would believe is better, that might lead to more trust, we should explore that. The fourth out of the six is the investigative process more generally. When there is a complaint about an officer, who do you complain to? How do we determine if that complaint is valid? There's a process for that. We can explain and describe that process. Perhaps we can also improve it. The Board of Safety, the way that works is in the state law. But that doesn't mean that that's all there is to the story. There are things we can do before or after or around it. For that matter, we could include, including different forms of civilian review. And we could even engage the state about whether the state law is serving us well here in South Bend. Since there's a lot of interest in the makeup of the Board of Safety, just before we move on from that, um, topic, let me, forgive me if I am missing or misremembering something because I do not, uh, remember fully everyone's full career backgrounds. But, uh, there are five seats on the board. One of them is vacant, and I'm going to be making an appointment soon.
They're vacant for how long?
The professional backgrounds of the others include one former firefighter, one, uh, pastor, one former police officer, and one business person. Okay. The fifth out of the six that I would mention is training. Because a policy doesn't mean much if people aren't trained well. I would, it may be the case that there are other things we could do around training to empower residents to have a role in how we shape that. And the sixth out of the six that I will mention, again, an area where I will accept responsibility for the fact that we have not met our goals, is recruiting more members of the, the, more diverse members of the police department to begin with. So, I don't know if those six things are all it would take to deliver trust. But what I will say is those are examples of very important things in this community and in policing that we could work in a collaborative process as a community to review and perhaps revise. And if there are others, I promise that any specific suggestion about an action that will increase trust will be taken seriously. I cannot promise that I will, or chief will, or the council will, or anyone will all agree on what the right thing to do is. But I promise that we will find a way to have community voices heard, to have good ideas taken seriously, and to move in the direction of greater trust.
Thank you, Mayor Pete. The NAACP will offer themselves, our board, uh, will offer ourselves to help you to build trust. Um, we have Dr. Moss, uh, who has PhD and is a part of our community, uh, chair, leadership role. We have Dr. Regina Hill, uh, as well, and we have Kara Aaron, who is a lawyer. And we certainly are going to offer our services, uh, to assist in helping to build trust, uh, with you, the police department and our community. And we look forward to being engaged in that process.
We would, we would welcome involvement from, from the NAACP and other community organizations too. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Last question that I have. Um, what resources exist for people affected by officer-involved shootings? This is important, our community is grieving. Uh, certainly there's pain, most especially from the incident on Sunday. Um, there are people, as we have seen tonight, Friday, Thursday, and, uh, other parts of the week that, um, there are some challenges. Um, and certainly there are resources that our community could, uh, participate in or, uh, understand that they have an opportunity to utilize the resources that you would offer.
So, any family that is impacted by an officer-involved shooting? Well, we know that there are certain things people need. Not all of which can come from the city. There's a desire, first of all, for answers. And it's why we seek to get information out as accurately and quickly as possible. But the answers almost invariably come slower than what was desired. We know there's a desire for justice. That's what these investigative processes are about. And it's one of the reasons why I'm taking care not to say anything that would be a thumb on the scale of those processes. There's also a need for just resources. Uh, I don't think it's a secret that some families who are negatively impacted by interactions with law enforcement, um, could use help with the costs of paying for this. And maybe that's an area this community And a generous community like ours might be able to do something to help them.
Alright, um, let's move right back into question and answer, and so. Okay, here, let me, I got one more question that I can raise. So, when we talk about the process, um, there are a lot of folks involved in the process of addressing challenges, especially when we talk about and, and procedures with the police department. We have the Board of Safety, and we have FOP. And so, you know, sometimes having, uh, a lot of, um, folks to answer to can become cumbersome and slow a process down. Can we speak to, we're talking, you may mention on the review board, that would add to what we already have? Uh, which, you know, now I find, you know, even being in the military, an Air Force veteran myself, um, sometimes the process was cumbersome because you had to, uh, bring people into agreement on a situation. Uh, and that would, became somewhat difficult because you had different personalities at each table. So, we talk about FOP, we talk about the Board of Safety, we talk about the chief and the process that works with him, and then your process. How do we make this all work when we've got so many people making decisions at the table? Is there unity, is there oneness of mind? You know, can you speak to those kind of things?
One of the things that you had said before, and I wanted to address this because I was remiss, and I'm looking out at everybody sitting out here, and when you talked about, for lack of a better term, advocates. And when I see, do we have anything, and we do, the prosecutors have, has, has people. When they call, when somebody is a victim of something, to help them out. But what is never known is what did they do it for? And I will tell you nothing. And I look around here and I see many people, reverence, pastors, priests, rabbis, that come out without being asked to try to help with whatever the situation is. The smallest ones to the ones that we're seeing right now to come out there. And I, and I'm sorry, I was totally remiss on that. But much appreciated, and you'll have to pardon me as well, I'm, I'm losing my voice and everything else. It was, it's been, it's been a long night from that component. But, but all, nobody ever gets recognized, and I'm just telling you, I, I wanna send out a personal appreciation. And you know who you are that are in here. It, it means a lot to see you out there, you know, not taking sides, but doing what's right.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So, the question dealing with FOP and dealing with the Board of Safety is dealing with the process of our chief and your process, Pete. Uh, can you share some things?
It's a good question. If the process, well, perhaps the process can be improved, but to the extent that it is what it is, the best we can do, the next best thing we can do is to provide as much information as we can about it. I do think we can find other ways to structure the process or add to it or simplify it. I mean, this is, this is convoluted, and I get that.
Gotcha.
Um, and so that's something else, I would welcome community input on how to improve.
Okay, alright, thank you so much. And thank you for inviting us in, I appreciate you saying it the way that you have. Um, you're wanting to invite the community in to be a part of the process. And we believe, community, do we believe we can help with this process?
Yeah.
So, I think we have a lean right there, is that right? Alright. So, we're going to now go back to question and answer. Um, we have, uh, two minutes.
Hello? Yes, yes, thank you so much. Uh, we're going to take a few more questions, and Blue, would you like to have a question?
All power to the people. All power to the people. My name is Blue Casey, founder, president of New Black Car Movement in South Bend, also the founder of Fremont Perk News Foundation. I'm also a shooting victim of last month on my own mother's day. They shot my recording studio up 16 times, I caught two of them. One in my backside, I came out, one in my foot, had a bullet in my foot for a whole week. I worked with the city on numerous occasions, I was just an employee here in the city this past summer, this past summer and fall, for, for community development and research. So when I say this, everything I'm saying is not biased at all. Mayor, Mayor Pete and Pete and, and, and Roskowski, and Roskowski, we can have a conversation on numerous occasions. When I got shot, I would make, I wanted to make sure that you knew that I got shot. Um, we just heard all of this 2016. And I wish, as much as I love my city, because Lord knows, everybody told us, "I got shot, I need to move my, my, my place over to Atlanta." But, huh? Listen. Like I was saying, like I was saying, like I was saying, like I was saying, like I was saying. I wanna say that I love this city. I wanna say I love this city so much, and I wanna support y'all, but I refuse to lay down my respect for these people out here that's hurt. To be, to say something that's photo op and say something that, that, that sound meaningful, but it ain't. The same process that y'all been telling us to trust, y'all told us in 2016 when we approached the area and everything. The same process y'all asked us to trust, so how can we trust that process? How can we ask another black man to go join the police department to try to be part of the change when y'all got sexual harassment, uh, disparate, sexual harassment charges inside the South Bend Police Department? Y'all, y'all promote the bad offices and, and promote the good ones. Y'all got racists that started up the police department. How are we supposed to trust you? Mayor, when a young man got killed over there, ran over, had to stop, like, what did you say? What did you say, Mayor? You can't even believe him. How can we supposed to trust you? How can we, and, 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 and you partner, you the partner, when you the partner with a lot of the stuff that we done did with my organization, I understand that. But when you mess up, we gotta also pull that out too. When the city messes up, we gotta pull that out too. And our people is hurt. Dr. King said, everybody out here wanna be murdered with the King's dollars, right? Dr. King said, "Everybody out here want to be murdered with the King's dollars," right? Dr. King said, "A riot is a voice of the unheard." I'm not encouraging a riot, but these people is unheard. These people is unheard, and that's what I'm getting, that we asking y'all, getting. So, stop telling people shut up. Stop telling people how to feel. Because I'm not sitting here saying any further. I'm fighting the same fight these people are facing. I have to stop, we about to, we know we fighting against it. I gotta retaliate against it, trying to fight against Eric and everything. My girlfriend, at the moment, got chased down by police pulling over her. Police come to the car. Hold on, the police come to the car. The police come to the car and say, "That's not hurt," when they pull her over. They retaliate against people when they fight back in the city. How can we touch them? When we getting retaliated against, fighting against y'all, how can we touch them? Y'all gotta change that. I told y'all, go ride it, do y'all jobs. If you want, if you want our votes, which I doubt you gonna get it, do your job, just so you can have a moral compass when you leave this place. Wiskowski, do your job, so you can have a moral compass when you sleep at that dog. Because right now, the street is crazy. All right.
Appreciate you, thank you so much.
And I know that two days, three days is not enough, and I apologize for the lack of time that we have. But I know, Mr. Geiger, you have a question, did you ever answer, ask the question? Or, if I may, Blue, was there a specific question that you wanted them to respond to?
I just want to know, now, the council approved monies for the body cameras, right? This was years ago, right? When this was passed through, Henry Davis Jr. brought this up, a number of people brought this up, right? I would like to know why. According to the company that produced the body cameras, it says that once a shot is fired, it's supposed to record. Now, when we were at WUBS, right? And the family was speaking on the air about this. Councilman Oliver Davis Jr. actually read the article from the South Bend Tribune that reported that you all had said that, you know, the body camera, this is what it was for, it's called with this technology. However, in that conversation, a news reporter who was conversing with, by text with a police officer, I don't know who, you all said that it didn't have that sensor, so it wouldn't go off? And we just want to know why? It was paid for in full. You all said, and you wrote the policy, right? You wrote the policy in the duty manual, right? We want to talk about that too, right? Like, how are there all these loopholes, right? Like, oh, it's like, the officer's discretion if the cameras turn on, turn off, headlights gotta be on, they have to flip a switch, all this stuff, right? Then it's like, well, maybe they could, maybe, maybe, maybe if it's bad enough, yeah, they could record, you know, record the situation. Why wasn't it already mandatory in the policy that you record every interaction with citizens? It makes no sense. It makes no sense. It's paid for, you already knew people were upset about it, so it should have been dealt with. And, one last thing, I'm sorry, one last thing. Since you fired Boykins for a federal investigation, if there's a federal investigation, without you should be fired.
Thank you.
So, if I understood your question correctly, it's about a feature where, when a gun is removed from its holster, that is, then it automatically activates the body camera? I'm sorry, I can't hear Jordan, I cannot hear Jordan speak if you're shouting over him. Please. When a shot, I don't know that is...
So, Jordan, good question. That, that technology exists, but it's not implemented. I have the same question that you did, and I called the company myself, and I talked to them myself, and their best guess, when they implement, implement... Let him talk. They don't even have it testable yet, and will not be rolled out until the spring of this coming spring, is what the company told me. You can call and check and ask with them, same thing that I did, call and ask them.
It's gonna be really hard to respond to Jordan's question if we can't hear him.
Thank you all.
We're gonna move on, unless you have anything else you want to add, Chief, Mayor, move on to the next resident.
Right, so the... The policy was... The policy was approved by the Board of Safety. I do not know who drafted it, but I believe that it was drawn from model policies from around the country. And, again, per the general order...
That's right, same there!
My view is that under the current policy, when an officer on a call encounters a civilian, the camera should be activated.
Okay, we have the mic going to the next person.
I want to give a very specific recommendation that you might be able to embrace. A great example is that I'm an elected official representing the district, who happens to be the district in which this tragedy occurred. And I find it hard to believe and sad that, you know, it's hard for me to step up here and take the mic. I think one of the problems that we're experiencing here today is that, when I first came on the council four years ago, we had that meeting that the gentleman referenced earlier, so, that was about policing. That was about some of the officers who are currently, we're addressing right now. It's been four years, and there's no action. In fact, there's a problem still with those specific officers. So, what I think, my specific recommendation is, is that you begin to think about ways, and those ways have been, over the last four years, brought to you by the same people that I see speaking here tonight and yelling tonight. They're yelling now, they're yelling now, they're yelling now because they haven't had the opportunity to speak to you in a way that gives you that information. So, and I'm hearing all of that. So, this is, this is my specific suggestion, is that, when I see you in front of the cameras, or when I see who's on the list to invite to the table for conversations, I see the same black people over and over and over again, year after year. And yet, the people who are in the audience when you have these public forums are the same black people, but they're not invited to the table. And I think that it's time for you to rethink who you think the leaders are in this black community. Not to say that the people you chose for the Board of Public Safety aren't leaders, that their opinions aren't valid, not to say that our esteemed President of the new NAACP doesn't have an opinion. But when you continue, when as any leader, when you continue to go to the same people, and you have anointed them as the voice of the black community, you are leaving an entire group of people out. And so, my specific recommendation is that you investigate ways to be more inclusive. And I don't think it's too hard, because everybody knows Jordan. Everybody knows Jordan. Because he has been on the front line of this since he returned to this community from graduate school. There needs to be more meaningful conversations with a more diverse group, because what you see tonight is that African-Americans are not monolithic. We do not have the same ideas, thoughts, and opinions, and we do not have the same experiences across the country, or especially in this community. So, whereas we can choose a group to stand behind us, and then it looks like, oh, well, yeah, black people endorse this or that, I think it's really important for you to figure out ways to connect with the Jordans, with the Goos, with all of these people who are out here. Tiana, who spoke to you earlier with a very specific example, she has been doing that work for, I don't know how long she's been trained. And this is a specific example we've been trying to bring to you. How do you address those things? And so, we spent four years, even before I was on the council, the Citizens Review Board was actually put in a resolution, and, by the common council, to say, "Let's investigate that." Yes, it is. And so, this specific example is that you look at those things, that you go back, and we don't wait, because my question is, how long? My question is, how long before you take action? And you respond to what the community has been asking for, for years, Citizens Review Board, period.
Thank you.
Phil, due to the length of time, well, Mayor, would you like to respond to that? We do have two more questions, we have been running...
Yeah, I'll be brief. First of all, I welcome the spirit of that suggestion. I'm always trying to get more voices to be heard. I don't want to seem defensive, but we've taken a lot of steps, they clearly haven't been enough, but I cannot accept the suggestion that we did nothing. If we're not for the conversations we had, we might not have done what we did on bias training, civil rights training, community policing, introducing the cameras, the online transparency. But I acknowledge that it has not been enough. I would like as many different voices to be at the process as possible. That's why we do Mayor's Night Out, that's why we're here, even though not everybody would advise some of these means of soliciting input. I would also say to activists who want to be heard, who haven't felt in the process, please accept the invitations when you are invited. Some of the specific individual student names in your commentary were invited to my office and decided not to join. And that seat at the table, I want people to know that the seat at the table is waiting for you. And I would welcome more input from you on how I could do a better job in making people feel that they're actually welcome when invited to that table.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next question is from a resident from South Bend.
Hi, I have two questions, one specifically for the Police Chief, and one specifically for you, Mayor Pete. First of all, the citizens of South Bend paid for those police cameras, correct? Okay, millions of tax dollars went to those police cameras, right? And when you rolled them out for us, when you had the big news, the press conference, and said how good they were, and they were gonna work, well, they failed. And we don't get our refunds. That's one. Two, the second question is, what's the standard procedure for transporting a gunshot gun pistol to a police officer after a gunshot by a police officer, and transported by a police officer after the accident happened? That is, I want to know the procedure for the transport, and when will we get our refunds for the D-bump police cameras that are not working for our community? Because, you know what, I am raising a seven-year-old grandson, and when he sees the police, he is afraid. That is not what's supposed to happen in America, in Indiana, in 2019. Please address the two specific questions that I've asked you today, and thank you for your time.
So... So, let me start, may I start with the, with the transport that you're referring to, and everybody's well aware of it? Absolutely, whatever any officer can do, that they believe is right, to save somebody's life, in their belief, and I don't know, I don't know.
No, I want to hear him, please, please, I, I need to hear this. So, let him, please, tell me, because those are my, I need to hear it. I'm not being selfish, I just want to be informed on what the policy is. Please let me hear it answered.
I have the policy, and I will tell you that specifically, I spoke to, I don't want to say the two doctors' names I spoke to, they will hopefully come forward somewhere in the future, had talked about, and what it's called, and this is blunt, it's called load and go. As quick as, as quick as we can get somebody within that golden hour to the operating room, not just the ER, to the operating room, is the most optimal time we can to save somebody's life. I don't know if those are the exact circumstances that happened Sunday. However, if they...
Will you though, so that you can inform us?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you though, so you can inform us? Is that investigation still ongoing?
This is, everything is still with the prosecutors, any, any video, any body camera, and there may be body camera and in-car camera video of all the things that happened out there, maybe not one specific officer, but all the officers that responded out there. Yes, I would look forward and I hope that I would receive that from the prosecutors, that they're using that as their investigatory evidence. In a criminal case, we as well would use that within our internal case.
Okay, and the only thing I have to say to your answer, thank you for answering me, is, this is sounding a little Laquan McDonaldish to me, because in 2014, this happened in Chicago, where they said there was no camera, and there was camera, there was footage. And then, once everything started rolling downhill, and it got leaked, that there was dash cam footage, then people started resigning and getting fired, and the mayor, Ron Emanuel, quit being the mayor because there was a cover-up. So, I just want to make sure that you are aware that we're looking for no cover-up. We want transparency, total transparency, in this case, because Eric Logan got, my sympathy and condolences to Eric's family, Eric Logan did not deserve to be treated.
So, a few things I just want to mention. One is, and I know people don't want to hear this, but I need to tell, but I do need to tell you something that is truthful, and I'm not commenting on this case because we're waiting for the facts on this case. But in some cases, it has been recommended that when waiting for an ambulance, it is better to just have a police officer take them in, and that there's not a chance of saving their lives. I'm not talking about this case. Yeah, and we will, we will research that and put that out, because I know that's important. Secondly, about the cameras. And I should also say, look, we have to wait for the prosecutor's part, right? So, we've, we've been notified that there, that they did not find body camera footage from the officer of the moment of the shooting. There may be other footage to work with, dash cams from afterwards, I don't know what it might tell us, but I just want you to know that as that emerges, there will be transparency. The next thing is, you're saying, can the city get its money back? Because we bought a technology, and the public was given a certain set of expectations, and those expectations were not met. If the failure was a failure in the technology, then you could hold the company accountable and ask for your money back. Or, could I, please, could I, could I please continue? It's possible that the technology worked as it is supposed to, and the failure was somewhere else. There could be a failure in the policy. There could be a failure on the part of an individual to adhere to the policy. Again, I can't speak to the specifics of Sunday, Sunday's incident, now, because that's under review. But I guess my point is, it could be any of those things, a failure of an individual, a failure of the policy, a failure of the technology. We will find out, but if anybody's trying to figure out who to hold responsible, the administration bought the technology, hired the officer, and wrote the policy. So, at the end of the day, I'm responsible. Lastly, what you said, I think, is really important, and it's what's at stake today, and I know we're, we're gonna have to wrap up for now, but obviously, this is the beginning of a conversation that will continue. But when you say that... When you say that your grandson is afraid when police pull up, that is the biggest thing that we've got to change. Good, well, hopefully, when he's old enough to be mayor, he will look back on these moments as when we found a way to start moving toward a day that I want him to see, I want to see it too, but I definitely want him to see it, where a black child and a white child, or a black adult, or a white adult, when they see... or a black adult, or a white adult, when they see or hear a police officer or vehicle, feel the exact same thing, and feel safe. And, we're just not there. And, I'm doing one, everything I know how to fix it. And the chief would not be the chief if I did not have confidence he's doing everything he knows how to fix it. And, obviously, we're not there yet. We can't do it alone, we can't do it without the community, but I believe in this community, and, and places all over the country are trying to get a handle on this. And if anyone can, can do better than the rest of the country, if any community can, can fix it, or at least make more progress than the others, I believe that South Bend can do that, to do their best.
Thank you. Would I go to, I have a question?
I have a question for the mayor and the pastor up there. First of all, trust has to be earned. Secondly, how can a pastor ask the police chief who thought or of the world console people who've been hurt? You go to the church for that. Pastor, have you been out there to comfort them?
I have, I've been.
Have you went to the other churches to comfort them? Have you?
No.
To the world to do your job? Don't you to the world to do your job? This is spiritual thing, and you know it.
That's right, and that's why I spoke to you.
Did it, yes? Yes, if I'm not mistaken, I heard you said, if the cameras were working, and I heard the police said that they, uh, uh, turn on the camera for a certain situation, did you get a guy who was on call and say that he was breaking out, or what have you, if at the time to turn on the camera? You know what? A situation when he is down is because of those things for years, what you're talking about racism that you find don't happen in the park? Yes, you do. You do have to say, to find out who these were, if he's one of them. So how does it affect anything you say?
I'm sorry, I was not, I apologize, I was not able to hear the question.
Then you said that Ken Carter, the prosecutor, may be over searching? I know Ken Carter, he's the biggest lawyer in South Bend, he cannot be searched. I know him, I know for a fact he cannot be searched. So Pastor, when you tell us what we need to do, as a man of God, because I know the word, you get out there and comfort your families.
I'm out there.
You get the rest of the other families together, get out there, and walk to be in public.
That's why you're raising that question. I've been meeting with the families, Eric Logan's family, and other families in our community. So since you did not know that, I wanted to make you aware of the things that I have been doing. I have a church that I pastor, there are pastors here that pastor their own church, and they give them spiritual guidance. So I appreciate you letting me respond to your question. If you ask me a question, let me respond. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have, if I may, if I may, um, with the help of the National Action Network, they have been helping in regards of collecting some questions, and I know that we have been going over some of the questions, so I will at least get a few in, if I may. The first one is, since you mentioned the failed efforts to diversify the police department, what will you be doing next? So that is both to, uh, the mayor and the chief, if you would not mind.
Yeah, so I can tell you, one idea is that we have a CTE with the fire department, um, and some have said, can we have a CTE program with the police department for the same purpose, to get more applicants, young people interested in law enforcement? The reason it hasn't been possible up until now is you gotta be 21 to be on the department, versus 18 in fire. Um, but, uh, because we've really been pressing this issue, uh, the police department leadership has come up with the idea of having a sort of joint CTE that gives people a career in law enforcement with the county, or in some way, short of being a police officer, to bridge those three years until they're old enough to become a police officer, and it's one example of a measure that would help create a pipeline. But, um, this is one where, I promise you, we have tried everything we can think of. We, we've even placed online the data about how many applicants of each racial background come in and then fall out at each stage of the process. And if there's things we haven't thought of, which there must be, uh, we need the help of people in this room and people in the city, because we cannot expect there to be the comfort level we need, unless the police department actually reflects the diversity of the community that is...
Thank you. Ma'am?
May I as well share?
Yes, you may.
Because what the mayor is referring to, at the police department...
If we may, please, thank you so much.
Through our diversity inclusion, matter of fact, spearheading everything's been Christina Brooks, through all of our resources we have at the police department, and through the sheriff's department, to the mayor's point, you can't become a sworn police officer until you're 21. However, working with the sheriff's department, you can start as early as 18. With that being said, that's not the important part, the important part is, it's called homegrown. Our neighborhoods bringing their recommendations to us and through us, with the homegrown programs, how we start to make that change. I don't know if it'll work, we're just now trying it, we've tried everything, and one most important thing, and anybody that knows me in this room has heard me say it a million times, and here comes a million and one, community in reach. We've done outreach after outreach and keep getting pushed away. We'll open our arms for the in-reach to help us. I have been begging, and if I have to do it again today, and I am doing it again today, I'm begging you, please help us change what needs to be changed.
Thank you so much. Do you have one more question from a fellow resident? And then we'll have Mayor Pete make closing remarks, please.
First of all, I want to say, everybody in here may have different views. We are all hurt, but we all have different views. We gotta remember that if, if we're not part of the solution, we're part of the problem. Now, if, if I were to, if I were to fall right now, I would say, ow, I would scream, because I'm in pain, but then after that, I need to put a, a Band-Aid, I need to put solution, I, there's process to the healing process of it. First of all, I want to take the time to thank everybody that's been here, right now, and is voicing their opinions, and is hurt, and is voicing that, because without your words, change won't come. Without your pain being expressed, there was, there would be no change. Close mouth doesn't get fed. So for that, for that reason alone, I, I thank you for coming and voicing your opinion. Now, like I said, there's, there's a process to it. The pain has been heard, the remarks have been heard, so now with the man here, and when we're all here, sitting, waiting for other plan, waiting for suggestions on how we can change this, this is a time for this now. Now, now, one, one last thing I want to say is... One last thing I want to say is, for everybody that's here supporting either cause, is, what kind of friend are you to the, to the, to the cause? And I want to say it like this, I have a friend that is getting ready to make a decision, it might not be the best decision for him, but he, he might make the bad decision, because he's hurt, it's pain, just like us right now, we're, we're hurt. A good friend would, would change the direction of, of that friend, and he'd say, hey, I know you're hurt, but instead of contributing to what you're about to do, look, this is the real way to solve it. And, and not, not, not many of us can do that. We have a lot of friends that are gonna go the wrong path, and instead of being the bigger man and saying, hey, that's not the way you do it, as a friend, I'm telling you that this is, this is a better way. That's the same way I want to apply this to this cause. We could, we could come here, and we could yell out, we can, we can, but unless we educate ourselves and our people that we care about on how to follow the process, we won't have any change. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you so much.
So, this is the beginning of the conversation, not the end, and I need everyone to participate and stay involved, and I cannot promise you that you will be happy with every choice we make, but I promise you that every piece of input will be taken seriously, every voice will be heard, and I believe that the city can do this. I believe the city can break new ground in what it takes to deal with a crisis that so many communities are feeling. So you can decide whether or not you believe in me, but I believe in this city, I believe in you, and this is part of it, and we'll keep it up. And I thank everyone for tearing it up to be part of this, and I thank everyone for believing that there's a way forward in our community, because this is our home.
Um, before we dismiss, um, we're gonna actually ask Apostle Patton to close us in prayer, but I do want to...
Thank you so much. Dr. King said, we must accept finite disappointment, but never lose信心 and hope. Let us bow our heads in prayer, let us bow our heads. Father in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity to be able to come together as a community. We recognize that all of our questions and challenges have not been answered, but this is the first step in the process. We thank you for the win, oh God, that our mayor has mandated that those cameras be turned on at every, uh, episode or event that a police officer would encounter. We look forward, God, to the next steps and the wisdom that you shall give us to address the challenges of our community. Thank you as well for the other win, in that our mayor has invited individuals from the community to come to the table, to have a voice, to communicate unto him and leaders that shall be at that table, the things that challenge them. Now, God, give peace unto every person here. We pray that you heal, we pray that you deliver, we pray as well, God, that your hands be powerful upon every person that is here. Give us driving grace and protect us as we go to our many destinations, in Christ Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, everyone. There will be next steps, um, please stay tuned, it'll be a next step, so we can have public dialogue and feedback. Thank you so much, and enjoy the rest of your day.
All right, guys, um, there you have it.